Welcome, everyone. Pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by advertising such notice in the Home News Tribune, the Asbury Park Press, the Board Office, the schools, and on Cablevision Channel 118, and Verizon Files Channel 24, and by filing such notice with the Township Clerk. This meeting was scheduled for Tuesday, January 10th, 2023. The Board will take formal action on payment of bills and other agenda items. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Giordano. The Obridge Township Board of Education acknowledges that the law of this state establishes that members of the public, including members of the Board, have the right to record public board meetings using audio or video recording devices, provided that that act of recording does not interfere with the business of this public board meeting. Therefore, the Board makes it known that any such recording is to be considered the private recording of the individual, and in no manner represents the official record of this Board. The Board therefore takes no responsibility for such private recording and completely disavows any future use.
Roll call.
Ms. DeAntonio?
Present.
Ms. Jaudry?
Present.
Ms. Lent?
Present.
Mr. Marqueta? Mr. Slade?
Here.
Mr. Singh? Mr. Solakowski?
Yeah. Mr. Singh, who is a contract building private housing in Jersey City, working on a multiple unit, and the last thing they had to do was get all of the gas units installed. One of them is not working, so he's late because of a gas leak. And Mr. Marqueta, he said he's going to be late about 10 minutes, so he should be here shortly.
Okay, to repeat, Mr. Solakowski? Mr. Weber? Mr. Giordano?
Here.
Quorum exists.
All rise for a Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have an addendum to approve. Move the Board accept the addendum to the action items for the Agenda Session of January 10th, 2023. Can I have a motion?
DeAntonio will make a motion.
Okay, second. Okay, Weber, second. Roll call.
I'm sorry, can I get those motions again, please? DeAnto- Ms. DeAntonio?
Yes.
Ms. Jaudry?
Yes.
Ms. Lent?
Yes.
Mr. Marqueta, I'm sorry. Mr. Slade?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Motion to add the addendum to the agenda is approved.
Okay, we will discuss the approval of minutes next week. We'll have the report of the student representative. We will be recognizing John Mayer for completing his Eagle Scout projects. Will we have a superintendent's report?
Yes, there'll be a superintendent's report on how the district uses sort-of-the-score data to improve student performance goals and educator performance goals, and that'll be given by Dr. Ferry, and we can tie that in with the progress towards goals. If that, and if just at this time, just if the Board wants to update and the public where we are at Sandberg School. All three of the portable temporary boilers arrived today on trailers. They've already started the work as of around 9:45 this morning of connecting them to the school. That does put us online to be at the earlier end of the timeline estimate for the early part of next week, hopefully as early as Tuesday, right after the Marmalade the King birthday. As for tomorrow, we will have be using the remote platform. As everyone knows, or has been shared, the Department of Education requires by law three days of school being closed before they would accept an application for using remote in place of school in person. Their school district operates on 181-day calendar, and because we operate 181-day calendar and through the Board's allowance, the Friday, the first Friday would not count towards a day that the students and staff would have to make up. So now we're just looking at the two days of Monday and Tuesday. There's a pretty good chance that we would use for Sandberg, the June 6th in-service day. That's already on the calendar, where the staff is already coming in on that day to be one of the make-up days. And looking at, you know, the holiday, the winter weather, seeing how many snow days we use or don't use would make a difference whether we make it up at the end of the year or look at it a different holiday. But my goal is not to use any of the spring recess dates. We shouldn't, we should be able to get by without that, because again, we only have to make up two days by New Jersey code, based upon where we're at right now. The parents in this option, after we reviewed it with this Board, were given the option to have at-home remote or in-person remote for hopefully just a Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and then coming back on Tuesday, hopefully. At this point, 82 students have signed up for in-person, in which we'll have learning centers at the high school. They will be supervised with educational staff, guidance staff, support staff, there'll be nurses and so forth here. That's also inclusive of any students who will be at the Grade 9 Center for any of our LLD or ABA classes. So we look forward to having those students here. I think they'll obviously get some good teacher-to-student ratio at those numbers, and the support staff they'll need. And I think for some, a very good glimpse at the high school life, what it looks like. Our Mark's been great. We've put time aside for the students to receive lunch at the high school and get a lunch period within there. And for the students who are having the remote option, just like last time during the, when we had remote education, the state has approved a waiver for distributing meals to those students who would not be getting lunch in school because their parents chose the remote option at home. And their pickups can begin at the high school as early as tomorrow? Tomorrow, between 4:00 and 6:00. And so that is the kind of update from where we, things, information that didn't already go out to the parents and to the Board, and we look forward to hopefully putting this behind us soon and this being a very successful venture into trying to deal with a unfortunate situation. As far as information that wasn't shared with the public yet, the Board has already put a claim in with the insurance company. Obviously, this was not something that was the, through the workings or any parts within the school district. This was not a failure on any appliance or lines within the school district. This happened at a regulator which is not prior to the meter and belonging to the utility company. So we are, we put a claim in. We anticipate that our insurance carrier will work things out with the utility carrier for any expenses that we hope we incur during the process of basically having to rebuild the infrastructure of our gas lines at Carl Sandberg School because of the gas surge that went into our building. Thank you.
Is there any correspondence, Mr. Mayor?
On a much lighter note, I was the winner of the Ugly Sweater Contest last month, and I received $110, $110 to donate to a charity of my choice, and I was able to get the Middlesex County Association of Business Administrators to match that, and we donated $220 to Middlesex, Feeding Middlesex County.
Okay, special committee reports. I reached out to the Board members for them to tell me what they wanted to be chairs of and members of. We have a tentative list right now, and we'll be voting on it next week. And right now, we're going to go to hearing of the residents on agenda items only. Well, yeah, we're, yeah, we're voting on the boilers, so, yeah. If you, yeah, sure. And just state your name.
Hello? Kristen Sheeran. I have a daughter in Sandberg, 6th grade, and another daughter in Sharaw, 1st grade. My question is, as it relates to this arrangement, if for some reason the temporary solution doesn't work, we personally suffered extreme education loss due to COVID. My daughter has an IEP. She has learning disabilities as well as many other things. So it's great that we have the high school option, so we did choose that, because my husband and I also both work outside the home most days. But I would like to hear about the, I guess you could call it, emergency planning, and how that will play into, come into play as it relates to, can the kids, if we have a situation like this, whether it's a flood or a hurricane that comes up, what's the plan in one school if something happens? Where do these kids go? Because remote is not a great option, obviously, for anybody, and these emergency things happen all the time. So my concern is, what happens if this temporary option doesn't work? These bans come, and, you know, we have another problem. What's the plan for that? Because it seems like it's going well, and hopefully it does, but I am concerned as a taxpayer of one of the middle schools, what's going to happen to our kids if we can't get back into that school? Because having to go to a high school, even with 82 kids, I think that's amazing for the people that chose that option. But I know a lot of people also struggle, struggled through this. I guess I also want to know, as it relates to that too, with the IEP, kids that do have IEPs. Again, the remote learning is a struggle, and making sure that when these emergency things do happen, how that, again, plays into the whole remote learning aspect. Thank you.
Would you like me to give an opinion, or? Oh, yep, but I didn't see anyone else. Does anyone else want to go up? Okay, thank you.
So in the existing emergency we planned, we had prior to the remote option, there was a plan for a split schedule, whereas the students would be displaced at another school for half the day. Those, that's how emergencies kind of were handled for years, and even during construction, prior to this going, going back, prior to the existing remote. We vetted that conversation, and it was deemed that this would be a better option educationally for students. So that's the way we went with it. The other backup in case, that back, you know, that would be a backup if these don't work, and, you know, from the contractors that were working, who've done this many times before, stated, you know, this will be working. The other one is when I talked to the county superintendent, I said, you know, because I had to get application and make application to even get this approved, I said, my next course would be if this didn't work, looking at off-site and getting approval for an off-site location, which is not as easy. So something like, you know, a university or a school, a parochial school that's not being used. So I have him and his, his office identifying locations that could work if that, if that was the case, and we had to go down that route. As far as the IEPs, we will be working with, and I know with students with IEPs, that Dr. Tui has looked at how he can give that additional time back to those students through programs or even extending school-year programs that we could do to help assist with those students who have IEPs and had suffered not from being in school and had some learning loss, even during this short event, hopefully.
Okay, moving on from hearing of the residents. Nothing to vote on for policy? Curriculum items 1 through 4, does anyone have any questions on that? Okay. Hearing none. Finance, item 1, we will be voting on today. Can I get a motion?
Slade will move.
Second?
Marqueta, seconds.
Okay. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Slade?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Mr. Bill List?
$750,000 allocation included in this amount?
No, no, the $750,000 withdrawal from maintenance reserve is for discussion.
In that case, yes.
Ms. DeAntonio?
Yes.
Ms. Jaudry?
Yes.
Ms. Lent?
Yes.
Mr. Marqueta?
No.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Resolution 1 passes.
Okay, any questions for items 2 through 9?
So, Mr. Giordano, let me just address the item number 6 that Mr. Weber brought up. We, until we, a determination is made as to whether the, in our insurance carrier will cover the cost of the emergency repairs that have to be made at Sandberg, we need to withdraw from our emergency reserve, maintenance reserve fund. I estimated $750,000 to cover the out-of-pocket during the period where a determination is being made by the insurance carrier. The way ma- the way maintenance reserve works is, I'm requesting 750. We've already used $350,000. Whatever is not used will have to be returned to maintenance reserve. So which is, rather than ask you each month for additional money, I thought the best thing to do would be just ask you for 750, which will cover the first two months of us being down, hoping that it will all go back and the insurance company will reimburse us for whatever our costs are. So that's the rationale behind the request for $750,000 out of maintenance reserve.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. Moving on. Athletics, items 1 through 2, no names, so nothing for there. Okay, and then non-certificated personnel office, we'll be voting on resolution number 1. Can I get a motion?
DeAntonio will move.
Weber, second.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. Roll call.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. DeAntonio?
Yes.
Ms. Jaudry?
Yes.
Ms. Lent?
Yes.
Mr. Marqueta?
No.
Mr. Slade?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Resolution 1 passes.
Any questions on items 2 through 4? Hearing none. Moving on. Non-certificated personnel operational, items 1 through 3. Any questions? Okay, hearing none. Non-certificated personnel other, items 1 through 6. Any discussion, any questions? Okay, hearing none. We will be voting, certificated personnel, resolution 1. Can I have a motion for that?
Marqueta will move it.
Okay, can I have a second?
Jaudry, second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Ms. Jaudry?
Yes.
Ms. Lent?
Yes.
Mr. Marqueta?
Yes.
Mr. Slade?
Yes.
Mr. Weber? Ms. DeAntonio?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Resolution 1 passes.
Okay, any questions on items 2 through 15? Okay, moving on. We have an addendum for non-certificated personnel transportation, item 1. Can I have a motion for that?
Slade will move.
Okay, can I have a second?
DeAntonio will second.
Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. Roll call.
Ms. Lent?
Yes.
Mr. Marqueta?
We're voting on transportation?
There's an addendum.
Okay. Abstain.
Mr. Slade?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
I hear every bus driver we can. Yes.
Ms. DeAntonio?
Yes.
Ms. Jaudry?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Resolution 1 passes.
Okay, transportation, items 1 through 3. Any questions? Okay, hearing none. Moving on. Supplies, equipment, and services, resolution 1. Can I have a motion?
Lent will move it.
Okay, can I have a second?
DeAntonio will second.
Who was first, who was the motion? Okay, perfect. Any discussion?
Yes, Sal, I got a quick question. So, Joe, so the initial payment is $360,000, and then it'll be $87,000 every month after? Is that how that works?
It's every 28 days after. Well, we hope, I mean, the goal naturally is to get this done within the first 28-day period.
I have a couple of questions. The, if we are extended out to the full four months, it'll be $623,000 and change. Now, the question is, at the point that we think we're ready to send the case back into the building, I would like to have the comfort of having had a mechanical engineer review the project, because safety is obviously primary. I'm not a fan of remote learning, but we're not allowed to see these children in the building until we've had a qualified mechanical engineer inspect it, and if there is a recommended repair to it, that we get somebody who designs it, and that'll put us out to bidding. It'll take time. But I think the first priority has to be nothing but safety. So at this point, the other question I have is, I know that you have a notice period. How much notice do they need if you're going to vacate the contract?
What contract are you talking about?
I'm talking about the $360,000 we're bringing in the temporary tanks.
The trailers are already here. I believe there's a certain number of days to terminate the contract before the 28-day period. Look, I just, to address the first comment that you made, the wheels are already in motion, or the process is already in motion with engineers to develop an alternative plan to reroute the gas lines into the building. It's already, it's already begun, begun last week. The, and they've been, they've already been to the building over the weekend. They've evaluated where the, where the best possible locations will be for the new gas lines, and that process is already begun, so.
And for administration, the other question is, will any of this work? And for administration, the other question is, will any of this work vacate the place while students are in the building?
Yes, this work can be done, this work can be done because in the new, and Ernie Charcomis here also, just he can correct me if I'm wrong, but with new construction like this in school districts, generally, the piping for this type of stuff goes on the roof of the buildings and not underneath the buildings. The problem that we have here is that our piping is underneath the buildings.
Additionally, while they're doing the work, there's no gas lines coming to that work while they're working on it. So, the gas, the gas main will still be shut off, off property. They'll construct the gas lines going from the meter to over the building to the boilers. And when they finally take the point where they're going to reintroduce gas, introduce gas into these new lines, we will do so when the students aren't in school. So, either after school's done for the day or over the course of the weekend.
So, on the assumption that children go back while this is still being undertaken, the possibility is this could be a month only on remote or whatever the case may be?
The goal is to have the remote completed by the earliest part of next week. So, our goal, we would love to see happen, is that the students are back in the building with the temporary boiler units that are outside the building, not inside the building. So, there's no, there's no threat of them inside the building. They're on trailers outside the building. That would hopefully take place on Tuesday. That's the best case scenario. If there are situations where they connect from, to these trailers, take it a little longer, like when I introduce it to the public. Our worst case scenario is the following Monday, which would be another week of, a continuous week of remote. So, the best case scenario is three days of remote, the worst case scenario is eight days of remote. I'm sorry, seven days of remote because of the holiday next week.
Okay, any other discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. What's the timeline with the process here? So, the permit pulling, the architect drawing, all that stuff is going to take time, though. So, I mean, we're looking at more than, what, seven, ten, seven days? Right, to get everything, everything going? I mean, you have to pull permits, you're going to have to submit them to the county, the state, township. Is there any way that we could put a rush on this as far as going through the township to get an emergency permit? Is that, is that possible?
I think you're talking-
The process is as follows. We, we are required to prepare drawings with the modification to the gas lines. That, those drawings have to be submitted to the DOE. They understand that it's emergency. They have to approve it. Once they approve it, we're able to, we have a contractor in place that can start the project immediately. But then, at that point, the contractor gets the permits through the township and the work begins.
And then we'll have to go through bidding as well, right?
It will not have to go through the bidding if the, we believe the contractor that is doing the repairs now is able to do the work. But in an emergency situation like this, the bidding laws can be, they are waived, and it does provide me with the, with the authority to award a contract without going out to bid.
All right, thank you.
If you're looking for specific timelines, though, you know, I can't say how long it will take for the state to approve the drawings. I can't say how long it will take the drawings to be completed, and I can't say how long it's going to take the permits to be issued. What I can say is that process has already begun, and it begun within two days of this incident happening last week.
Now- Can I just say something because I see confused looks on the audience because you guys are talking about two different things, and what you're asking is a little confusing for what we just explained. There's two processes here that are happening. One is the temporary fix that gets kids back in the building next week. So, we don't have to wait for, we don't have to wait for DOE approval for the drawings. We don't have to wait for the architect to record to make the drawings. This is just a temporary to bring, you know, it's like putting a generator outside your house. We're putting, we're putting boilers outside the building and bringing that, that ability in to heat the building and bring hot water into the building. That does not require all of those loopholes and steps that Mr. Marqueta is asking Mr. Marabout. That process has already happened. The trailers are already here. They've already begun the hookup. Like I said, the timeline for that to get the students physically back in the building in a safe manner is Tuesday at the earliest, the following Monday at the latest, seven, three days or seven days remote total. The second phase is because we don't want to have big trailers outside the building for eternity, is to now repair, restore all the gas lines that were destroyed by this event that are under the building. But we're not going, you can't go back and repair them under, under the building. So, we're going to vacate them. So, now, the question being asked, what is the timeline to get the new permanent gas lines in place? Which would be, we have to have the architect who's already begun the process, engineers have already come to the building, looked at that. So, we can have that, the drawing's done, the spec's done on that, and then they have to be, and Mr. Marry, this is where you can interrupt me anytime I go off pace. That, at any point, they then have to go to the DOE for approval. Once the DOE then approves them, the builder can be assigned because, I mean, the contractor can be assigned because we're using a contractor that comes to us through the- Ed Services. So, it helps us without not having to go out to bid, plus it's emergency. So, that contractor can then take those specs, go to the township for permits, work with the township engineers for permits to get that process up and running. And that timeline is probably at a minimum, how many days, to get, to get construction started.
I, look, that, if, that could be a month, that could be two months.
It could be a month, it could be two months. That's why we're talking about having the twenty eight day piece here. But at that point, the students have already been in school since, hopefully, a week from now or earlier. So, that part with the construction on the roof and everything else, the students are already in school and learning. The staff is already working within the building.
Yeah, that was, I was going to say that next. I was actually going to clarify that. Thank you.
Okay, any other discussions? Okay, hearing none, roll call.
Mr. Slade?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Dantonio?
Yes.
Ms. Jodri?
Yes.
Ms. Lent?
Yes.
Mr. Marqueta?
No.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Resolution one passes.
Okay, and then for next week, items two through four, any questions on those? Hearing none, we're going to move on to miscellaneous, items one through six, any questions? Okay, hearing none, we're going to move on to board secretary and board business. Resolution one. Would you like to talk about it, Mr. Mayor?
January is just generally the school board's recognition month. So, we just, every school, every school board has this resolution on just recognizing the board members and the service that they provide to their particular district.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none. I'm going to open it to hearing of the residents on any school district issue. Okay, seeing none, I'm closing the hearing of residents. Any old business from board members?
Yes. So, students are going to have a short period of time, not to be quantified yet, of relearning, which I know a number of parents, including myself, if I had a child in a district at this point, that I'm not particularly favorable of. On the other hand, if this lingers on for four months, even though we'll have kids in the building, we're going to spend six hundred and twenty five thousand dollars to do so. I think that we can, if we try and minimize this expense for these temporary situations by somehow mitigating distributing these nine hundred and seventy three or eighty three students, whatever it is today, to vacant space within the district now. I know I'm going to hear there's not a lot of vacant space. But both Sandberg and Salk School years ago had over twelve hundred students each. Shurah School had over five hundred students each. In the two thousand and one referendum, we added three sixty eight hundred square foot gymnasiums into three schools, Memorial, Shepherd School, and Voorhees School. Typically, up to that point, all the schools that had been built had twenty eight hundred square foot gymnasiums. So, in theory, one of the grades could be moved to Salk School, which they should be able to accommodate, but that's not what we hear right now because they don't have the capacity. They have nine hundred and four students when they've had twelve hundred and fifty previously. So, I say that's an administrative problem to resolve. Getting back to the other grades, I think the consensus when we talked about it was try if we could get sixth grade students into middle schools, which would be a benefit to them rather than having them with seventh and eighth graders. And what is now the grade nine center has six hundred, less than seven hundred students in it, and it also had the same twelve hundred and fifty students in prior. So, I think it might take a couple of weeks, it may take administrative planning, but I think the ability to get those kids back going to a regular school until this project is totally done is within our ability to do so and shorten the amount of money we spend, the six, up to the six hundred and twenty three thousand dollars. That money could be much better applied for loss of learning.
Okay, any other old business?
Yeah, I'd like to piggyback on what Frank just said. So, basically, everything, I agree with everything that he just said. They, you could definitely move the kids into, from the grade nine center into the high school and then move the sixth, seventh, and eighth graders to the GNC. The demographer says the capacity inside the high school is three thousand, three hundred and four. With the GNC students in there would be two thousand, two thousand, seven hundred and five. There's a whole bunch of other statistics that I could spit out to you guys, but I don't want to bore you with them. There could be, you could, if you're uncomfortable placing the sixth graders in that building, if you weren't going to move the ninth graders, there's ways around creating space within the elementary schools. It would advise, it would take, some classrooms would have thirty children, but I think for an emergency setting, getting the kids in the classroom is better than any sort of remote option, whether they're in the auditorium with one proctor, where basically all hell's probably going to break loose. So, I'm a proponent of getting them in the classrooms no matter what. If the administration would like to see this, I could email it to you, it's your call, then you could tell me why it doesn't work. So, it's up to you, though. That's how I feel, so thank you.
I just want to clarify that they won't be in the auditorium with one person. You just, if I understood what you said, that they would be in the auditorium with one proctor?
That's how I read it.
They won't be in there with, with one person. And I'm not sure, I'm just trying to understand what you're suggesting, that we, we change their classrooms at this point in time also and their teachers?
I am suggesting doing what we have to do to keep them in person learning due to the already high learning loss that they already sustained throughout the fifteen, sixteen months the schools were closed.
Okay, any other old business?
Wait, hold on, so, so just, just to give you, so Shepherd has three second grade rooms with fifteen pupils. If you remove one, you have two rooms with twenty two pupils. It also has three fifth grade rooms with eleven students. If you remember, if you remove one, you have two fifth grade rooms with sixteen pupils. This could free up two more rooms, not including music or art, four more in total. So, that combined with Miller would give you eight schools, eight rooms extra.
I'm not sure where the-
I don't want to, I'll email it to you.
Shepherd doesn't have three sections on a grade level.
According to the demographer, it did.
Shepherd doesn't have three sections on a grade level.
All right, I'll email you and then I'll correct it if I'm wrong.
I have a question. Just real quick.
I just wanted to say that I understand the need to have the children in class learning, but there's also a need to make sure that they have a safe environment to attend class. And I think that's a little bit more important at this time. I understand that you're working with building and fire code enforcement to make sure that all the proper steps are in place. I know Frank mentioned earlier hiring someone to oversee the project to make sure it's done correct. I'm sure township officials and fire code officials are watching every step and making sure that the gas lines are being properly installed and everything is being followed by code. Also, just to add comment, if we are shifting students around and adding students to different schools and classrooms, I think we have to be mindful of occupant load and make sure that they're still put in a safe environment rather than just rushing to put them into any classroom, into any environment to learn. I, saying that, I understand the need and the want to not do remote learning. I'm just saying that there are other factors that do have to be considered before we could just throw together a plan just to avoid the remote learning.
Okay, so, and, so just to get some clarity, aren't we only remote learning, giving the kids remote learning access just in enough time for the remote boilers to be up and running, to get the school functional? So, I don't see a need why we're displacing children when we get the remote boilers working, we get hot water and, and heat into the building, the kids are going back to Sandberg. So, I don't understand the need to look for other locations. I understand Frank's concern about the financial burden that we're going to continue to, to restructure the pipe, the, the, the gas lines. But I'm, maybe I'm missing something, but we only need remote access just until the kids can get back into Sandberg, unless I'm wrong. All right, unless I'm missing something.
I also have two things. One is a question for Mr. Mayor. Out of the money that we're paying for the boilers, can't that go as part of our insurance claim?
In any, in any situation like this, the insurance company, they've also sent their engineers here to, from Rhode Island to look at the causes of the, of this emergency. They have to make a determination as to whether or not PSENG or JCPL is responsible for this, what the cause of this is, as is our engineers. But in order, we can't wait for a determination by them to determine it. No, we cannot wait for them to tell us they're going to cover this. That's why I'm requesting removing the money from maintenance reserve in the short term with the hope that it will all be returned back to maintenance reserve. If this, if this emergency is covered by the insurance company, it'll become a fight between the insurance company and PSENG and JCPL, and our deductible on this particular policy is only ten thousand dollars.
Okay, so that was my point, is that although it's a big chunk of money to be talking about, there is a decently good chance that we're getting it, get it back. As far as moving the kids around, if it is a worst case four month, you know, worst case situation, you can't take, just because you have extra seats available in a school, doesn't mean you have extra classrooms available in a school. You can't take two kindergarten classes that have separate teachers and say, okay, there's sixteen kids here and twenty kids here. We're going to take this kindergarten and split it, so now that we have an extra classroom for a sixth grade class. You can't, we're talking about not disrupting our students, but we also can't disrupt all the other students in the district. That's why we've, as a board, voted down not to do a split schedule. And that's why we opted for the remote learning because that gave our students the best chance of continual learning. And we all voted together to put our special needs students first because we know they're a, a sensitive group, or not, not sensitive, but I can't think of the, vulnerable, thank you. You know, a vulnerable group that already suffered the first time. So, I think this board did a great job, and I think we're, we're doing the best we can as a district.
I didn't vote for the remote. And I also feel that one-
Lenny, Lenny?
Yeah.
It's, it's a fine line perhaps, but we can talk about the direction that came out of the executive session discussions, but not the details of who said what in executive session? That's why we go into executive.
Understood, I apologize.
Sorry.
Two point eight million dollars that we just received from the state. In reading that, that's specifically dedicated how it can be spent, and it can't be used for any of the supplies, correct?
No, when, when we applied for the stabilization aid in September, we asked for seven- we asked for $7.6 million of stabilization aid to cover the $16 million of loss of state aid that we've had over the years. We had to specifically identify by appropriation line how would, how we would be using those funds. And they came back and told us that we can use these funds for those appropriation lines that they've identified.
Yeah, but those appropriation lines, as I read them on others, will have nothing to do with the street area or anything.
No, they're specific. It's instructional supplies, security, and transportation costs.
Okay, any other old business?
Yeah. With the, must be going colorful, I'm sorry. With, with our organization meeting, and one of our new members is Devinda Singh. And Devinda Singh has been in the U.S. since 1983. He's been a citizen since 1987. He reads and writes English very proficiently. Unfortunately, he came without his glasses. Now, Joe, was that the case when you had to read to him?
I'm not sure about what you just said. I can just affirm that he asked me to read the swearing-in language on his behalf. So why, he asked me that, I just did what he asked me.
When he spoke to me, he said that he left his glasses at home, which he wears for reading. So, that could be resolved. But in any event, when you do register for the Board of Education, one of the requirements is that you do be a citizen and a registered voter. You can't be a, a registered voter without being a citizen. So, my point is that for people, particularly Mrs. Calley, to jump to a conclusion and spread it on tweet, whatever the site is, is really, um, you know, it's unfortunate, because here's a man of color, and we talk about DIY, but we have to live it too, for DIY. What's that? DEI, yes. Yeah. Yeah, and I, I don't even know whether it could be, uh, you know, there can be no complaint. I'm sure registered by hand within our system, because it's outside the systems. And also, Mr. Mr. Solakowski came out of a hospital bed the day before, had the tenacity and the strength to come here and vote, so that we had full-line board members to vote and, and pick the presidency and the vice president. And he was, uh, he was mocked basically on public media and stating that, "Really? Look at, look at him." With a question mark after "vice president," and said, "He should worry about his health." This guy's been a teacher, I think, for what, 30 years or thereabouts in this district? Lived in town most of his life and has been a, a big activist in the community for all those years. So, it's just reprehensible, and I hope that kind of vitriol does not come forward before people have facts.
Okay, any other old business?
I'd like to piggyback on what Frank just said as well. As the, uh, as the child of immigrants and hearing the stories that, that they told me when they first came to this country, I have a bit of a softer heart for them, so for anybody to be making any sort of, I, I didn't see anything, I don't know if it was said or not, but if any, anybody ever sorts of, like, just picks on anybody that really can't speak the English or comes here in search for a better life, I, I think maybe you got some searching within yourself that you have to do. Uh, and, and I appreciate Mr. Solakowski coming out one day out of the hospital to make sure that the board could go forward with the vote, so, thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
I just wanted to mention that on Tuesday, January 24th, is going to be a curriculum and special services meeting in the Old Bridge High School library.
Okay, thank you. Um, any old business, any other old business? Any new business?
I have something new to share. Today was the first day, and their placement did not change their fervor for t- competition, the first day for the Carl Sandberg Middle School esports team to participate. They took on the reigning middle school state champions from Barnett Middle School in Union, New Jersey, in a esports competition, and they won. It was great to see. It was just like any other competition of event. We had parents there, siblings cheering them on, students cheering each other on, communicating with e- each other on, you know, when to attack, when to sit back, when to go towards the puck. It was a, um, an event with a cars hitting a simulated, uh, puck in an ice hockey rink, and, um, the kids did a great job. It was, it was a great first event, and I look forward to more opportunities there.
Mr. Sidino, can I ask you a question on that? Is there a way that the public can watch an esports tournament, or a...
Well, yes, I'm glad you ask, because as the, as the program's developed, one of the, the roles that students will take on is developing, live streaming of the events and doing commentary, like, an announcer like would on, uh, Monday Night Football. So they would do the commentary, they would livestream it, so their peers can watch from anywhere around. They would do publicity, they would, you know, like, almost have commercials for it, so. So a lot of great opportunities for not only the, the student athletes who are competing in it, but, um, other students to get involved and, you know, develop some skills that'll take them beyond high school into middle school, high school, into college, and into the workplace with great 21st century skills. So, the coaches did a great job today, and just congratulations to the team. Just one thing I want to note, because, you know, it was brought up. You know, I, I keep on hearing about all the space in the schools, and I keep on hearing, and, you know, I've invited board members to do walkthroughs with the schools, and I've had a few reach out to me, but I, you know, some of, some have not, and they keep on talking about all the space in the schools and, you know, haven't been there in, since I've been superintendent while any students were in school, to, to my knowledge. And board members are supposed to report when they're going to report to a school, so I, I don't know when they're there. But we did a demagoguery report, too, and she had page 25 of the elementary school says, "In viewing the elementary school documents, and in some cases, speaking to principals, we have found that there have been some positive a- and aspects to the enrollment decline, which we have acknowledged. The most obvious is that the general class sizes, for the most part, in schools are on the lower side, with some few exceptions. Virtually all spaces in each of the schools are taken, offering a wide range of opportunities and services to students." Because when the schools were built, the services that we provided are now mandated to provide, it didn't exist. So whereas, and we've talked about this, you know, where you might have had 24 kids in a class, where you've now taken LLD, LLD classes, and ABA classes in, um, ELL classes in, classes that did not exist in the homeschool base back in the day. Years ago, those students were sent out of district. Now, in the least restricted environment, they're required to be kept in their homeschool, and that's the best, so they're not on buses, traveling far distances to come to a school and to get home to the families. So, to house these students, educate these students in a least restricted environment, the classrooms have sometimes as minimal as four to eight students in them. And so when you look at the enrollment, say, well, there's gotta be space in there, because there used to be 350 kids in that school, but now there's only 275 or 225. It's because the uses of the school have, 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 have changed. There's a great book about it called The Incredible Shrinking School, and it's what it talks about, is that the school of 1975 is not the school of two, of 2022. The schools have changed, the programs have changed. We have more students in our schools now that wouldn't have been in our schools in the past, and that's a great thing. But it doesn't mean that we can just move kids around like chess pieces and say, oh, there's a space over there on that chessboard, I'm just gonna put you over there, because their kids come to emotions and feelings. And if you were just to take, say, you know, sixth grade and put them here, and seventh grade to put them there, well, what about this, the teacher that teaches both sixth graders and seventh graders? So, in the middle of January, we're gonna say, well, you're gonna get a new teacher, and you're gonna get a new teacher, and your classmates that you had are gone, and they're gonna have someone over here, and, you know, we have a hard enough time finding qualified teachers to teach in a subject area now, now I might have to double up that number, because I've just split up their class. And while I've had this teacher teaching, you know, this load of maybe students in an algebra class or an honors class at the seventh grade, now I, I've taken that, the kids, because they go to an elementary school that may be closer to the house, but the other kids who were in their class go to elementary school on the other side of town, because that's closer to them. But now I need two algebra teachers to address the needs of those students. It's not as easy as just taking chess pieces and moving around a board and hoping that the best happens. You have to have students with their, their needs, and our goal is to get our students back in school as soon as possible. And that has been our goal since we found out the, 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 the tragedy of this event and how the magnitude of it. We don't want to just, again, displace kids because we can, when we can do something better for them.
On page 25, it also says, "The district is operating under capacity and with consolidation can increase the number of classrooms available throughout the district." So I just want to throw that out there. Also, I mean, as far as moving children around and doing any, you know, no, I'm not trying to say, and I don't think, sorry, I don't think that anybody that's making the suggestion is trying to say that what's gonna take place is easy. I mean, I think everybody knows it's gonna be a struggle. I think the teachers, I've seen teachers, music teachers, come out on their own time. I've seen teachers come out on their own time. I, I think they'd be up to the challenge of doing it so long as they understand, and they know that the, they're doing the right thing for the students, because at the end of the day, a lot of the teachers in our district are doing it for the students. As far as the displacement and everything, I guess I would have, I don't want to be disrespectful, but I, I would have liked to see the same attitude, I guess, when Cheeseclay was closing. So, to think about the children that got displaced at that point, that had to leave their childhood friends and had to move to Sandberg or move to another, uh, go to Memorial. So, again, not trying to be disrespectful to anybody who was on the board or on the board now. It's just, if we're gonna talk about it, then we're gonna, you know, we're gonna talk about it.
Right, but it's not disrespectful, but that's an ignorant comment, because you weren't in the rooms, you weren't part of the conversations, and it's also celebrated in the demographer's report that we had to close a room in that ru- uh, school. And that school was closed for those reasons, and, and it brought in $10 million of revenue that we can use today for, to offset this problem.
Any other new business? Okay. Hearing none, we're gonna go into executive session to discuss matters relating to personnel, attorney-client privilege, and property, and we will adjourn from there. Anything else? Okay, I need a motion to go into executive session.
Lent, we'll move it.
Go on, favor? Opposed? We're going in at 8:37.